They get a lot of a raw diet, um, like tripe. Um, I mean, it's a combination. I give them a raw chicken. Nor- normally like after Thanksgiving, when all the turkeys go on sale, I go and buy a bunch of them. And you know, it's like 10 cents a pound. So I buy a bunch of turkeys and then just cut them up and it's cheap to give that to them.
Well, you attract a trail along with turkey.
Why do I? Aaron, this, this is my other guy.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, he's real pretty.
Oh, some blue ribbons there. Nice.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they're all champions and grand champions.
Oh, I think, I think Aaron is trying to get in the meeting. I see him on the other side.
Okay, let me check.
Here he is.
I'm here. Aaron, how you doing?
I am.
Okay.
Hi Lizette.
Commissioner Mello, you still on vacation out there?
I am, I am.
That's great. That's great.
Kid brought him a two bedroom apartment. They don't know what to do with themselves.
Where are you?
The Blue Ridge Mountains. I wanted to go somewhere where we could ignore everybody but the squirrels, so. I figured that was better. You know, we had a family across the hall from us in Hoboken that got COVID a couple of weeks ago. Didn't even tell anybody. And I'm like, you know, I want to get to where people are spread out as possible. I wanted to camp in the Blue Ridge Mountains, but my wife drew the line at a tent. She's like, no, no, no.
I think you have to let Andrew in. He's on the other side, too.
All right. Is everybody here or still?
Everybody's here.
Commissioner Smith, I don't think, I don't think Commissioner Smith is on.
I believe he's just entered the waiting room.
Okay, there he is.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Evening, hello.
Good evening.
All right, here I go. So I'm using a different computer, so I have to re-download my meeting packet. All right, now we're in business. All right, if we can stand for the pledge of everyone. Pledge allegiance to the flag. The United States of America.
America.
Republic of the states.
And.
One nation.
One nation. Indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
If we can have a roll call, please.
H Foreman. A. Postado. A. Lewitt.
Here.
D. Mellow.
Present.
E. Seitzman.
Here.
L. Smith.
Here.
L. Vega.
Here.
All right, is that everybody? Okay, so announcement regarding notice. I would like to advise those present that notice of this regular meeting of the House and Authority of the City of Hoboken has been provided to the public in accordance with provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Notice of this April's board meeting has been scheduled for Thursday, April 8th, 2021, was sent to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger on Tuesday, March 30th, 2021, as notification to the general public of said meeting and sent to the city clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, March 30th, 2021, with a copy of the agenda to be posted on the aforementioned bulletin board in City Hall, the Hoboken Library and the Hoboken Police Department. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. In addition, I direct at the minutes of this meeting to state the following. As a result of the restrictions established by Executive Order 107 issued by the Governor of New Jersey with respect to the need to limit public gatherings to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, the meeting will be conducted exclusively through the use of communications equipment. This procedure is in accordance with NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 9.3, which states that a public body shall not be deemed to have violated any provision of the Open Public Meetings Act in conducting a meeting by means of communication or other electronic equipment. In addition, this procedure complies with Article 3, Section 7 of the Authority Bylaws, which allows for participation in authority meetings by members of the Board of Commissioners by means of telephone conference or similar communications equipment. And, um, Mr. Fitzpatrick, I believe you want to do your typical.
My comment announcement. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In keeping with the Housing Authority's normal practice of affording members of the public the opportunity to comment at monthly board meetings, the Authority will be accepting comment during this meeting in one of three ways. First, comments can be sent by email to hha@myhhanj.com from now until 7:30 PM. All timely comments received by email will be read aloud by an authority representative for all attendees of the meeting to hear. Second, beginning at approximately 7:30 PM, the Authority will allow access to participants one at a time to comment using their telephone or through Zoom's audio function. Third, if you are participating in the meeting using Zoom from a web browser or smart device, you can submit comment using the Zoom Q and A function, which can be accessed by clicking the Q and A icon at the bottom of your screen. We require that any member of the public who wishes to submit comment using the Q and A function, please limit themselves to a single submission rather than submitting multiple brief comments. In the event that a member of the public submits more than one comment, only the first legally valid comment will be read aloud at the meeting. Any comments submitted after 7:30 PM will be rejected and will not be read aloud at the meeting. In addition, please note that while the Zoom video of this meeting is being streamed through Facebook Live, public comment will not be accepted through Facebook or Facebook Live. Any member of the public watching through Facebook Live who wishes to comment may do so by email, by telephone, or by using the Zoom Q and A function. And once again, the email address is hha@myhhanj.com and the telephone number is 646-558-8656. Webinar ID 485881849. Finally, please be advised that the standard practice of the Executive Director and members of the board is to refrain from engaging in a back and forth discussion during the public comment portion of authority meetings. However, in light of the ongoing crisis, the Authority realizes that limited exceptions to that practice may be necessary. On behalf of the Authority, I thank you in advance for your patience and understanding. At this time, in order to allow more time for members of the public to submit comment in advance of 7:30, I recommend that the board consider adopting a resolution to reorder the agenda to allow the Executive Director to present his report.
I make a motion to pass such a
second.
If we can have a vote, please.
You're muted, Mark.
H Foreman.
Yeah.
A. Postado.
Yes.
A. Lewitt.
Yes.
D. Mellow.
Yes.
E. Seitzman.
Yes.
L. Smith.
Yes.
L. Vega.
Yeah.
All right, thank you to everybody and, and once again, welcome on this beautiful spring day. Feeling good. We did have some subcommittees meet this past month. Our Facilities and Capital Improvement Committee met on the 30th. We reviewed our capital projects. I did make a mistake in that I did leave that the Personnel Committee did not meet this month. They did. The Finance Committee did not meet, although we need a meeting before the May board meeting. Same with the Litigation Committee. We tried to pull a meeting together, but we do need a meeting before the May board meeting. Resident Services Policy Committee met at length to review proposals that came from program providers that we'll be discussing later in the meeting. And the Admissions and continua Occupancy Policy and the Professional Procurement Committee did not meet this month. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the installation of the Little Free Library over at Monroe Gardens. I'd just like to thank everyone that participated in that out there in the public. For those of you that haven't seen it, walk by Monroe 221 Jackson and take a look at the little library installation they put up there. It's, it's really tremendous. Just makes you feel better going by it. So thanks to all of those involved. From our staff perspective, we remain excited about our progress in the transition to RAD over at Fox Hill. It's our first step toward the real transformation of our Housing Authority and it's going well. I think Frank and his staff have put in a lot of hours over the past month as, as well as the executive team. We have continued the intensive work of fully implementing the program. We have held a series of COVID-safe lease signing sessions during March with staff spending a day on each floor, meeting with residents, explaining the process and entering new leases. The management agreement with Housing for Hoboken has been finalized. Again, finalizing the promise that the Housing Authority will continue to manage and maintain the property. Resident information into the HUD systems has been completed and the setting up of bank accounts and the associated business. Some has been completed. The rest is in process. Final apple submissions are going into HUD by the 14th, so we're well on our way and just again, very, very excited. It really shows a lot of progress. To repeat what has been said in the past, for all of you, HHA will continue to be the owner of Fox Hill Gardens and we will continue to manage the property now and into the future. Staff has met with the A and E firm and given them the, the order to proceed with a proposal to work up the scope of work for the work. So we're ahead of the ballgame on that, a little ahead of where we thought we'd be. The A and E firm is going to be writing up the specs for the improvements coming out to Fox Hill. On our planning initiative, again, a big step for us as we approach this crossroad for HHA in starting our strategic planning process. You know, let's remember, there's something I learned from my parents. Solutions are never easy. Band-aids never work. We're going about this deliberately and I do believe we have one of the best teams in the country at our side going into this process for the transformation of, of the Hoboken Housing Authority. I couldn't feel, I'm just feeling better all the time as we meet. We did meet with the, the planners. We owe that smart and deliberative process to our residents, present and in the future, and to all of Hoboken. In order to make a good transformation, we need to communicate and communicate between ourselves, between the residents and ourselves, between the rest of Hoboken, whether it's a political entities, nonprofits, everyone will be involved in this process over the next months. It's really exciting. You haven't been there yet, but you will. When you get together with the entire team and see the, the professionalism and dedication that they bring to this project. Again, I think we've got one of the best teams we could possibly have between our planning group and the Enterprise Community Partners at our side. The contract with our, our, our planning consultant has gained HUD approval and has been finalized. We did have our organizational meeting over, over on April 7th. We kind of went over final issues on the contract, what the roles of the, the attendees would be. Got our communication processes together and started to talk about scheduling timelines, milestones and moving forward. I did attach to my report the, the overall schedule that we're expecting to follow that shows that by the end of September of this year, we will be done with our planning, strategic planning process and be on very firm ground to move ahead with the transformation of housing in Hoboken. We expect that the week after next, the week of the 19th, that the planning partners will be here in Hoboken in the forest site visit, starting to get their feet on the ground here to see our properties and start to gain a feel for where we're going. Once that is done, shortly after that, stakeholder meetings will begin within the next couple of weeks after that, at the end of April into the first half of May. During that entire process, there will be significant resident and other stakeholders, whether it be groups from Hoboken, political groups, nonprofit groups, will be met with at each stage of that planning process. We continue to work with our technical assistance group from Enterprise Community Partners and they are now completing a summary of input received at our special board meetings back on March 21st and 22nd. So we expect to see some product out of that very soon and hopefully go public by May. The Resident Advisory Board will be meeting on April 13th, 6 o'clock PM. The meeting will be virtual and open to all. Notices will be placed on HJ buildings and all of our lobbies and will also be posted on our website. So we're looking forward to expanding the outreach on the Resident Advisory Board meetings. Policing security issues. We're looking at the possibility of applying for CDBG funds this time around. The city has put out a notice for the availability of CDBG funds for the 2021 year. And we're looking at the possibility of applying for funding for security guards over at Monroe Adams and Fox Hill. So that is certainly one thing we're going to go for in there. We are asking, I mentioned this later, for a facility committee meeting before the next board meeting, so we can further identify the things that we want to put in for that's this year's CDBG round. So we'll have interface with the board on that.
Hey, Mark, Mark, is that potentially a security committee?
It could be, sure. We could have both, matter of fact, because the, the facilities may should do it and we will get the security committee also.
Okay.
It's great. No problem. We did have some long conversations. I have had some long conversations with the Hoboken Police Department, the chief and, and some of the, the, the folks that are on the call today with us about the ramifications of the new marijuana legalization laws. This is going to affect us this year. I think we're already seeing it. We're seeing some kind of more blatant smoking out in the neighborhoods, out in our hallways. And I think we're going to need to do a lot of communication over the next couple of months and take a look at what happens as the weather breaks and what the effects of this brand new law in New Jersey is. Officers are with us tonight. Would you like to say anything about that particular topic, gentlemen?
Hey, everybody. How are you? Can you hear me?
We can hear you just fine. Do I identify yourselves first?
I'm Sergeant William Collins, Lieutenant Jonathan Butler.
Welcome.
All right. I mean, um, if there's any questions, feel free to ask. Like the director said, it is legal now. There, um, there are laws and rules behind it. But, um, it's almost where you could smoke a cigarette, you can smoke marijuana. It's not illegal. Now, I understand some questions came up. Obviously, you're not allowed to smoke cigarettes in the hallways at a housing in certain areas. Immediately, I think of like school buses and in schools and, and parks. Lieutenant Butler is in charge of the parks and the waterfront. But arrests aren't necessarily going to be made for that. It's, it's, you know, we don't arrest people for smoking a cigarette. We could kindly ask them to, hey, you know, try to respect your neighbors. You know, hey, don't, you know, warn, don't, don't smoke in the hall. You know, some people are complaining and whatnot. I know at one point, went speaking to the director and at one point when the commissioners, two of the commissioners came up to police headquarters, obviously that was a conversation because we were showing the operation for the cameras and, uh, it, it's, it's difficult because, um, you know, obviously if we could identify some residents and pass the information along to Housing Authority to maybe handle that on their end instead of police, but it's not that we're not going to help and we're not going to enforce the laws and the rules. But obviously, so everybody knows marijuana is now legal in, in the state of New Jersey.
Thank you, officer. Um, you know, the feedback I've been getting already.
One more thing, if I can.
Oh, sure, sure. Jump on in.
Lieutenant Butler. The law books, the law books as they stand right now, there are laws regulating tobacco smoking. There are laws regulating Kuma card marijuana smoking. Right now, there's no regulations for outside of medicinal marijuana. So marijuana, marijuana smoking right now, there's nothing saying you can't smoke in, in a building. You can't smoke in a bus. It's not treated as yet. The, the verbiage is not there in, in the, in the laws about marijuana. You can't smoke it here. You can't smoke it there.
There still shouldn't be underage smoking, correct?
There still shouldn't be, you said?
Underage smoking, correct. And, and the law was updated that you can reach out to parents just as you would.
Oh, yeah. So that's. Low brainer. That's just a common sense thing. I'm go, and I'm glad we changed that. I'm glad you brought that up as well. But just, just so you know, we're all kind of waiting for the legislation to, to update the, the verbiage in, in the statutes so that we can enact appropriately.
Very good. Thank you, officers. And, and, and part of our, our mission also is going to be, I think, updating our policies over the next couple of months. You know, when HUD came out with their non, non-smoking policies on a federal level, they were very focused on tobacco products and what their instructions were, were no smoking of tobacco products. And I believe they didn't want to address, and I believe on the federal level, they still don't want to address marijuana because it is illegal on the federal level. So it's going to be a little tricky as we formulate some new policies on this. I had some long conversations, or at least one long conversation with Matt on this. I don't, I don't know, Matt, if you want to jump in and, and mention anything on, on sort of where we are thinking we might go and some of the issues we have.
Oh, I think you summarized it, Director, that when the Housing Authority adopted its smoking, no smoking policy, the smoking ban, which was mandated by HUD, at the time, that only addressed lit tobacco products because that was what was required by HUD. And as you said, HUD takes the position and took the position at the time that on a federal level marijuana is illegal. So essentially, the Housing Authority did not need to adopt a policy to address something that was already illegal. But obviously, in New Jersey and a number of other states, that's becoming more of an issue. So the director has asked us to look at how we might want to maybe institute a policy or work it into our existing smoking policy and take a good hard look at how the Authority should address it going forward. Recognizing the reality of the fact that the federal law is not necessarily consistent with New Jersey law at this point.
And we'll be bringing this to the Resident Advisory Board. As a federally funded entity, we're, we're in a, we're in a dicey area, correct, Matt?
Correct.
That's correct. So, so we want to, we want to proceed carefully, but we do want to proceed and, and make sure we talk this issue out with staff, residents, legal side, see what we can do to be prepared because one thing we do know is it's changing and it's going to be a different, whole different scenario as, as it gets warmer and everyone's out on the street. It's going to be a little different than it's been in the past. Oh. All right. Thank you for that. The pandemic is still with us. We are still dealing with issues on a regular basis. Our community rooms remain closed. Our activities remain canceled. We have continued our testing activity in partnership with the city and the state. The next testing will be tomorrow from 1:00 to 7:00 over at 221 Jackson Monroe Gardens. We continue to urge everyone to continue to be tested. If, if you haven't been vaccinated, if you haven't been through that, or the word is if you've been vaccinated, but you're experiencing symptoms, to go get tested. Testing is available and it's important. So we encourage it very highly and, and we will try to continue to make that available for as long as we can. The new hot topic is vaccine activity. We have done extensive outreach to our elderly and disabled residents to encourage registration. We are reaching out specifically to any homebound residents encouraged, encouraging them to register for the homebound visit for vaccination. We are making calls and we're going as far as offering to help folks to register. So if anyone knows anyone out there that's in that situation, we'll be glad to intercede. We are also encouraging all of our employees to receive their vaccinations as soon as possible. Mark is, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mark. As far as those homebound residents, have we looked into those who don't have internet access, providing some type of access to be able to sign up? Yes, sir. And, and what we're doing is offering to do that for them with them. Absolutely, absolutely. We encourage all of our employees to receive their vaccinations. It's, it's, it's a little bit ironic because last week, finally, I was so happy because folks in property manage it, management finally became eligible across the board to be vaccinated. So we distributed that to staff, encouraging our staff to be vaccinated. And then hot on its heels came the announcement that, what I think on April 19th, anyone over 16 in New Jersey will be eligible for vaccination. So that's coming right around the corner. I've been talking to the city OEM. We're going to get information on that out to all of our residents, employees, everyone out there to encourage them to take advantage of that. The sooner we can head in that direction, I think the better off we'll be. We have had some occurrences of COVID on our staff. We have done contact tracing. If an employee has been in contact or in somebody's unit, we have contacted folks. We have had our employees go through a quarantine routine. If somebody tested positive for COVID, we have made sure that any employees that shared space with them also went home and were quarantined for at least that initial five to seven days and then were tested. So we've, we, we've had, we've had an interesting month on that. As you all know, Hudson County is one of the highest counties in the country. And so we continue to be diligent, diligent as we possibly can. We have had this past week. We have had this past week, a cleaning and disinfecting routine on all of our buildings. And we will continue that process on a regular basis into the future. We are, when we talk to somebody about doing any work in their building, we ask them if there's any indication of illness or COVID in their unit. Because we want our staff to be just as safe as possible. We continue to focus on emergency work orders as the pandemic continues. We are also doing some routine, but we are making some judgments on what we have to do now. Certainly, any health, safety, any emergency we're addressing. But we really are interested in focusing on keeping safe and making sure there's no ripple effects through our community. Late fees continue to be waived. And we do attach an updated COVID nineteen budget as attachment to, to my report today. Housing for Hoboken met this month. Want to thank all the Housing for Hoboken trustees. They have put in a lot of work. Making sure that our first RAD project went well. They've approved and implemented all the steps to bring Fox Hill under the RAD program. And they're engaged now and we expect them to be very engaged as we move forward with new projects and have a lot of input into our planning process as well. On vacancies, I attach a summary of vacancies. We moved in seven new families in March. And we transferred six families in March. I did make a mistake in my report as written. We do have your request for your approval tonight for a contract to repair and turn around forty-two of our worst vacant units. I put down that we'd be bidding this work this month. That's already bid. It's already in the can. We're just coming to you for an approval this month. Our local fifty-five task force account operation continues to work, focused on Fox Hill right now. And they're turning one or two units a week at the minimum. We are working with the HUD Newark office to classify our units as under construction and offline. So we expect success in that in the very near future. We do intend in the next sixty days to open up our public housing waiting list for efficiency in one bedroom units. We're starting to get to the point where within the next couple of months, we are going to be needing more applicants for efficiencies in one bedrooms. And that is the time to go out. It's a perfect time for us because we have the new software system coming in. So we want to do this with the new software company because it's part of their software package to accept the applications online to make the whole application process go smooth. So you'll be hearing from us over the, the next meeting with our plan for how we're going to go out and open up the zero, that's efficiency, one bedroom waiting lists. We've got a few more people. We've got some more people on the two bedroom waiting list. We may open that up too. We're going to take a good hard look at that along with our software provider. So that's some good news. We're, for the first time in a long time, we're going to be able to open up some waiting lists for some new applicants on our zero, one, and maybe two bedroom waiting lists. Software system, as I mentioned, we have been approved. The contract's been finalized. We had an organizational, organizational meeting with our provider, PHA Web on April sixth. Again, exciting, great. We've been working on this for a long time. We finally got the money. Our intent is to have the new software system fully functional by July. Right? April, May, June, July, we expect to be up and running on our new software system by July. July, August. We, we may even beat that. So they're going to start downloading data of ours toward the end of this month. And we'll start staff training in May. And we'll do intensive staff training. We'll do trial runs during May and into June. And we may even be able to light up sometime in June. But as you can imagine, as I've said before, for those of you that work with large systems, this is a major undertaking, undertaking for us. It's going to be a lot of work and we, we need to make sure it's right. We need to make sure all the data gets transferred correctly. We may, we need to make sure all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed before we go completely live. But this is a good system. It's a good program. And we have a lot of faith that we'll be able to have a seamless transition. We really don't think that folks out in the community are going to see much of a change at all immediately. But as we go forward into the future, as we look for functions of that software such as the ability to pay rent online, such as the ability to give more sophisticated reports to the staff and the board. Right now, for example, when we want to do a slice of our population, see how many kids are under sixteen or how many adults, we, we have to do manual counts. That will be a thing of the past. We'll be able to do that automatically. I, I, I just can't wait. It's going to be a great tool for us. So we're excited about that. Special capital projects, the Housing Mortgage Finance Agency is approaching the end. Believe it or not, we're getting toward the end of that project. It has gone extremely well. We've managed to stabilize our roofs, our elevators. The phase one elevators at Andrew Jackson are complete. Phase two is underway and they're getting to the final stages on that. We still expect that by the end of April, we should be done and be able to light up the elevators in phase two. And the Adams Garden elevator is slightly behind that schedule. Although we're working away, so we may be into May. We have job meetings with the contractor every two weeks. We will have a job meeting this next Tuesday and be updated on their race to the finish line here shortly. We were requested to bring you a relocation budget and all the numbers and where we were on the Housing Mortgage Finance Agency project. And in my report, I did put in what our Housing Mortgage Finance Agency projected budget was and approved budget was. And what our expected final expenditures will be as we get to the end of this project. We have, I think, done a great job in handling this budget along with our along with our, our consultant HOU. So we're going to come in significantly under budget. Speaking of that, I jumped over a line in the beginning of the HMFA discussion. We are finding here and in, in the construction side that we are going to have some money left over. The Housing Finance Agency requires required this project to put aside a ten percent contingency for each job. And we have really done well. We have not used our contingency money. And that's the good thing. The bad thing is we haven't used our contingency money, so we haven't spent it. Excuse me. So we'll be heading back now to the Housing Finance Agency requesting that they allow us to use that money. We've got some money on the table. And we certainly have needs for it. For those of you that were here, if you remember when we started the HMFA project, we had to cut back because there wasn't enough money to cover all of the items that we had identified in the original project. So what we are doing as we speak is going back to the original project, what we had to cut out, what we couldn't afford. We are putting those numbers back together and going back to the Housing Finance Agency requesting that they allow us to revisit this and complete what we had originally proposed. So we'll keep you updated on that. We don't like to give any money back. CDBG funding, we are working on the final scope of work for the twenty twenty funds. And that final work is before you tonight, later in our resolution. I think we've talked about this at a prior meeting that, and the twenty twenty budget that was already identified. We have work items that were identified with the camera system. But we have the new round, as I mentioned earlier, coming up now. So as we noted with the new round, we will be getting together with the Security Committee and the Facilities Committee to talk about what we might want to do with an application for funds this year. Those fund applications are due toward the end of May. So we'll be busy with that over the next five weeks or so, putting in a new application. The gate upgrades contract for Fox Hill and Adams Gardens should start soon. The weather's broken. The contractor is gearing up to do that work. Again, that is under contract. The repaving of the parking lot at Monroe Gardens is scheduled to start next week. We think it'll be a next Thursday, Friday project at this point, a little dependent on weather. So there's going to be a little inconvenience. Sorry, folks. But we're going to have to do some car moving over at Monroe for a day or so. While they actually do the new paving one day and then the next morning go in and do the striping and then we'll be done. A little short-term pain and some real long-term gain out there for a parking lots that's starting to have some real problems. The window installation and the stairwells at CCG is complete. Yay for that. And we have the new compactor at Harrison Gardens has been installed and is complete. And we've got five more compactors to go under that agreement. Once we're done with that, our compactor system will all be fairly new compactor machines in all of our, in all of our buildings. So we're looking forward to not having to deal with old creepy compactor machines. We are developing specifications for the replacement of our seven emergency generators. Again, once those seven emergency generators are complete, we will then have a new generator, emergency generator system at each of our buildings. And we are developing the specifications now for the repair of the facade at Monroe Gardens. The architect engineering firm was out this week doing their measurements, investigations to develop the specs for that repair on that facade. On management, the revised ACOP still at HUD for approval. Our project-based voucher program continues to be on hold. I should mention too, one of the initiatives that management should be, we think will be done next week is we're going back through all of our lists on old key cards. And we are going to weed out anything that might have been missed in the past. So we'll have a fresh take on all key cards. So they'll be, and we have heard that a couple of key cards fell through the cracks somehow. So we're going back and matching every single key card with every single family and redoing those key cards through our system. So that problem will be solved, we believe, in the next week to ten days. Maintenance, we continue to push on our REACT project. We, we need to pass our next REACT inspection. We have assigned crews to work on electrical plumbing boiler systems, masonry. This is, and we made a major effort through the summer. We are looking probably in July to have our own inspection done. Then COVID related, we'll see where we are on going into folks' units. But we want to bring in somebody to do our own in preparation. We are asking HUD if they open up their REACT inspections because they have had their REACT inspections closed. We are asking, I have asked them to come in in September to do a reinspection on our, on our REACT process. Because the REACT repairs that our crews are doing are going very, very well. We are going to have to spend some money and some time, but we're getting there. I did include a history of our elevator maintenance costs. I think that question came up at the last meeting. And, and I think this shows kind of the approach we've taken here. If you take a look at my report back in twenty sixteen, our elevator maintenance costs were four hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Just unacceptable. In twenty seventeen, three hundred and ninety-one. In twenty eighteen, three forty-three. In twenty nineteen, two hundred and seventy-four thousand. A drop of nearly a hundred and fifty thousand from two years before that. And in twenty twenty, they dropped down to a hundred and eighty-eight thousand in maintenance repair costs on our elevators. This is the approach that we've talked about for so long around these meetings that we need to build that firm foundation for our organization. Because that money is money that has come out of our, directly out of our operating budget.
Mark, can you tell me what you attribute those changes, those year-over-year changes to?
Yes, it's, it's our ability to.
Like from between two thousand sixteen and two thousand seventeen, how were you able to accomplish that thirty thousand dollars, almost forty thousand dollar change?
By investing in twenty sixteen, by investing money to do appropriate repairs on our elevator systems. When, when I walked in the door, the elevators were literally falling apart. They were, people were getting stuck consistently. And we had to make some decisions and make some sacrifices to go in and spend some real money to examine the system, decide what to fix, what not to fix, and spend some money. So when you do that first year, then what you expect is the next year is going to get better. And then the next year, you put some money next year. In those years also, we went out for the CDBG money to replace the elevators at Fox Hill. So those then, once those were in, boom, you're down for the next year. I think that was twenty eighteen, when those were opened up. So now what you're seeing is the effects as we go through and replace elevators, repair them correctly rather than short-term. You're, you're starting to, you're starting to see that budget fall. And that's, that's what's happening here.
Because I think the question last week was in relation to elevator, the cost of elevator repairs. And I just wanted to point out that if the elevators are new, we're not, we're not spending through the nose like we have been in the past. I think, I think that was the question last week, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
Yes, I think it was. And I think you're, you're always going to see some elevator repair cost because they are machines. But the question is, are you repairing them and are you keeping up with them and?
So you see Chairman Mello, elevators are not such a bad thing.
Elevators are highly expensive. I could tell you, and somebody lives in a fifteen-year-old building, we've already done extremely costly repairs. And even the maintenance of elevators is extremely costly. But thank you for your note. I appreciate it.
The fiscal year twenty nineteen audit is essentially complete. Finance committee needs to get back together before the next board meeting to review that draft audit. And having said that, I'll turn the meeting over to Daniel to give us his resident services report.
Hello, Commissioners. Thank you, Director. Commissioners, my apologies on my report. I jumbled up the report a lot in my haste to submit it. So my apologies on that. So I'm just going to highlight some of the programming and activities that we had as well as some future programs that we already have planned and some future activities. I want to start with the library continues to operate at the Learning Center four times a week. They continue to provide woke-up services to our community. They are planning a number of outdoor, outdoor outreach events coming up in April, late April and May. And those will be on our website on Monday. Hoboken Public Schools continue to do outreach to the Hoboken housing families. They were here late March, at the end of March with two onsite registration for their summer leave program. And also they were here for the pre-K registration for the school year beginning in September. So thank you so much for Hoboken Public Schools that continue to provide efforts, supportive services to our community with their onsite support. They are planning to come back with, in partnership with the Hoboken Housing Authority to do some outdoor events during the summer. So really appreciate their commitment to do that. I want to thank the Full Pantry for the continued support and service to the Hoboken family. They are back to the Harrison Gardens courtyard. They were here yesterday with their distribution from ten AM to twelve thirty PM. And they're going to be back on the twenty-first. They do have a special distribution of produce tomorrow. So that is a special one. It just, it came up. So we really thank them for their continued effort and support. And I'm sorry that we couldn't get that information out in time to all of our families. And I'm sorry that we couldn't get that information out in time to all of our families. However, the individuals that did come to the food pantry for pickup, they did get a, a little flyer. Containing that information for the produce distribution. As the director mentioned, COVID testing continues. Thanks to the city, New Jersey Department of Health and the city of Hoboken at Monroe. And that's going to be tomorrow from 1 p.m. to 7 p.m. And then on the 23rd from 1 p.m. to 7 p.m. So we encourage all of our families to be, please come and get tested. It is free, no appointment necessary, no insurance required. So that's tomorrow from 1 p.m. to 7 p.m. The resident advisory board is going to be meeting virtually next Tuesday at 6 p.m. So we invite our families to attend. The information is already on our website. So we thank the resident advisory board for making time to continually serve the residents of the Hoboken Housing Authority. At that meeting, we will again introduce our resident advisory board members to our community. So that way they can again connect and see exactly those individuals that have committed to serve. Those residents in those particular developments. Nexo, we are, we have uploaded about 500 contacts to Nexo. If you go to our website right now, you'll see a message that says, please text 4 H H A to 888777. And that will opt you into the Nexo service for the Hoboken Housing Authority. We will send you alerts, notices, announcements. Activity and programming information based on all of our future programs and services that we will offer at the Hoboken Housing Authority. So we invite our families to please go to our website and follow the instructions for opting into the service. We will also have flyers in our common areas telling our, our community how to connect or opting to the service as well. We have any number of future programming or that are, that will be in May, Mother's Day. And also we have already planned our Father's Day barbecue. But those will, I will mention them on a later day. Our families will be seeing those as they opt in to our service, into the Nexo service, future programming. Activities, resources and support, not just in our community, but also notices from the Hoboken Housing Authority. Thank you director, thank you commissioners.
Thank you, Daniel. And that concludes my report for this evening.
All right, thank you. And then as in accordance with the adjustment we made to the order of the agenda, now it's time for the public portion. Lord, is who do we have queued up to speak? I know a couple of people have, or one person's reached out through the Q and A that they want to speak. Do we have anybody else?
Yeah, so far you have no emails, so we're not going to address any emails, but we do have chats. So that would be Adrian Rolland requests, is requesting to speak.
Yes, yeah, she reached out. All right, so Ms. Rolland, you have the floor. She actually, I think she made a request to speak via video. I don't know if you know how to facilitate that or.
I think Angel will allow her as a panelist and then remove her when she's done. Angel.
Our Ms. Rollins, welcome. You have five minutes. Ms. Rollins, you do have to unmute yourself though. Your connection is. All right, Adrian, your connection is. Try to call in just via an audio connection and move on to the next person waiting.
Barbara Reyes is left a message. I'm not sure if she still wants to speak.
Okay. Is Barbara Reyes in attendance in the waiting area?
She is, she still is correct. Angel, can you allow her, please?
And Lords, while you're waiting for Ms. Reyes, you might want to respond to the Q and A for Ms. Rollins. Just sending her as I believe the chair was trying to indicate the telephone number and webinar code in case she wants to call in.
Okay.
Ms. Barbara Reyes is allowed to speak.
Great, thank you, Ms. Reyes. You have the floor for five minutes. Ms. Reyes, can you hear us? Commissioner Reyes? Here she is.
Hello?
Welcome commissioner, you have five minutes.
I'm so sorry, I couldn't unmute myself. I just wanted to, I know I put it into question and answers. I was having trouble logging in, so I couldn't log in and it was past the time, so I just have put it there. But I just wanted to say thank you to the director because last week, Hopes was giving out some Easter little bags for the seniors. And we were happy to see that the buildings were actually being thoroughly cleaned. We were at 311 13th Street and later on at 220 Adams, and they were working very hard to make sure that those buildings were cleaned. So that was very nice to see. I also witnessed it happening in my own building in 311 Harrison. I don't believe it was the same day, but later that week as well. I think, you know, people are too comfortable with thinking COVID is over and it's not. And so as far as us keeping the building clean helped a lot. Another thing that I, that I also wanted to bring up was, we had a community meeting with the police officers, which was amazing. They were always, always available to speak to us. And one of the things that we did bring up was the marijuana issue. And I understand that it's a law and it's okay. But something was mentioned about, well, smoking is not allowed in the hallways. You're right, but smoking is also not allowed in your apartment. So I, I had actually brought up the discussion and I'm not against anybody who does it. I personally don't do it. But it's, it's a nuisance because I have children whose bedroom has to smell the weed coming through, through the pipes. So I'm hoping that, I know with the new law, it's going to be difficult, but hoping that we can come up with some compromise. That obviously we're not infringing on anybody's right to do it. But that also makes the other neighbors comfortable. So director, thank you for bringing it up today and, and looking forward to you working on this because it is a nuisance. And, and lastly, I just wanted to say to, I don't know if Danny's still on, but I did receive a message from Danny. From actually Tony Tamarazzo today about hopes, if Hopes is able to help. A, a resident of the housing authority and the answer is absolutely, we are able to help. We are always available to help. We're not in person, but we are doing everything remotely. If they can just text us the information, Danny, if you have a specific resident that needs it. All we need is the name and the phone number and we will have staff reach out and assist them any way that we can.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
You know that. And thank you to the Hoboken Police Department because although it's getting nice out, it's not as bad as it was previously. But again, it's still fairly early, but you know, praying and keeping my hopes up that it stays like that. Them having a presence on Harrison Street and actually parking there is helping the situation. I feel they, they're moving. They don't want to stay there because they know that the officers are there. So thank you guys.
Knock on wood. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Great job.
Very good. All right. Well, thank you commissioner. Appreciate that. And I know, I know they appreciate you. You'd be a tough critic, but it's, your praise is always appreciated. Thank you very much. All right. I think next we had, Rachel Hoods had put in the Q and A that she would like to speak. And how are we doing with Ms. Rollins? Just queuing her up after Ms. Hoods, if Ms. Rollins, has she been able to make her connection?
I, I sent her the phone number with the ID, so hopefully she can connect via the telephone instead.
While this speaker is speaking, so Ms. Hoods, welcome and you have the floor for five minutes.
Hi, thank you so much. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, yes.
Great. Thank you Chairman Mello and thank you to the entire board tonight for your time. My name is Rachel Hoods. I'm the chairperson of the Hoboken Democratic Committee. And one of the things that our committee works on is voter registration and voter turnout. And as we are in April, we're a couple of months away from our next election, which is the primary in June. And so I just wanted to check in and provide some information to everybody listening here and offer to help. So first, I just want to share that the primary is this June, Tuesday, June 8th. In order to vote in that election, you need to be registered to vote and you need to be registered with a specific party. That party is the primary that you will be voting in. The deadline to register to vote in that election is three weeks before that election. So that is Tuesday, May 18th. You can register to vote here in New Jersey in a couple of different ways. One, you can go online and there's an online voter registration form. You can find that all at NJ elections.org. Or you can fill out a paper application. And if you fill out the paper application, you can either mail it in, there is an address on there that you send it to. Or you can actually drop it off in person at the Hoboken City Clerk's Office or the Hudson County Clerk's Office. Again, with the COVID restrictions, I would just check and make sure that the, what those offices capabilities are within person things. So the second election that I wanted to talk about is the general election, which is taking place Tuesday, November 2nd. Again, you need to be registered to vote in that election. And the deadline to do that is Tuesday, October 12th. Again, that is three weeks before the election. And I know that last year's election was abnormal because of COVID. We all were, every registered voter was automatically sent a mail in ballot. This year we are actually going back to normal. And for the general election, we're actually going to be offered early voting. The governor just signed that legislation into practice. And so if you plan on voting in the primary or vote on, but plan on voting in the general or both. This will go back to what it was prior to COVID in 2019 with your normal procedures. And they are currently working on the polling locations now. We expect that they will be similar to what they were in 2019. But again, they have not been solidified yet. Those will be shared widely. And if you are registered to vote, you will get a sample ballot, which will state on that sample ballot where your polling location is. Also, we will be getting our drop box at City Hall again, and we anticipate getting one and potentially even two more drop off boxes. So if you would like to vote again by a mail in ballot, which you are welcome to do without providing any excuse, if you just want to do it by mail. You are welcome to do that in our elections and drop it off at one of those mail in boxes. So I just share this because it is so, so, so important to get out and vote. You know, I was trying to pull together a list of all the reasons why I think it's important to vote. And I found this quote by Michelle Obama that I actually think sums it up perfectly. So I wanted to share it with everybody. She said, not many people want someone else making their decisions for them. Especially when that person might not see the world the same way as they do. And that's what happens when you don't vote. You're giving away your power to somebody else, someone who doesn't see the world the same way as you. You're letting them make some really key decisions about the way that you live. And so to that end, I just, I wanted to offer that I'm happy to host a more in-depth information session about voter registration. Or any of this election information. I'm happy to host office hours if you'd like it onsite at the Hoboken Housing Authority. I'm happy to do that. To help folks register, look up and see if they're registered or just generally answer any questions. And I would be more than happy to invite some counterparts from the Republican Committee so that we can make sure that this is absolutely bipartisan, nonpartisan. This is purely about voter registration and turnout and election information. So I really, that's the end of my comments. I want to thank you all for your time. I hope that we can work together on this important issue and I look forward to speaking with hopefully many of you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for that. And yeah, I'm sure we can take that up with committee very quickly, especially with those deadlines approaching. And, and certainly looping some Republican counterparts as well. So appreciate the information and thank you for sharing it. All right, um, do we have, has Ms. Rollins been able to get through on the phone line?
Not yet. We don't see her.
Okay. All right, well, she definitely knows how to get in touch with us other ways too. So I'm sure she will. And we could always, we could always suspend the agenda if she shows up sometime soon. So moving on. There's nobody else, correct, Lordess?
No, that's it.
So reports of the committees, any committees I've been on, I think.
Can I just interrupt you very quickly, Mr. Chair? I apologize. There was a, there was a comment from Ms. Rollins prior to her having asked to speak by phone. You may want to just read that into the record. In case she's not able to reconnect.
All right, so you're referring to the one about smoking, right? All right, so Ms. Rollins had put in a comment when, when the director was giving his report. That said, can H H A make a lease amendment about smoking in the halls slash units? Thought it was illegal to smoke anything in the units and how about noise issues after 10 p.m., 11 p.m.? Noise issues need to be addressed. So yes, thank you for that comment. And I think many of us were thinking the same way that there, there are. There is, it was actually a federal requirement to make smoking not be allowed within the units. So there might need to be some just legal tweaking of smoking anything. I mean, I, I think it might already read that way, but you know, it's always good to clear up any ambiguity that might be present. So I'm sure we can tackle that with short notice. All right, is there anybody else queued up to speak, Lordess?
No.
Okay. All right, so with reports from the committees, so any committees that I was part of that met, I think. That can be just discussed during the resolutions that pertain to the work of that committee. Housing for Hoboken did meet and you know, really that's, we finalized everything with the, the contract for Tori Gallus. So really just eager to get that whole process started and to be as inclusive as possible. To make sure we're reaching out to all of our residents and making them very much part of the process. And to the community of Hoboken as at large as well. So we look forward to that and that was, there wasn't a lot of official business done at our meeting this month for the Housing for Hoboken nonprofit. Are there any other committees that I'm not part of that need to have a quick report on their activities? All right, then moving on. There's no unfinished business for this evening, so. Resolution number 2021 dash 04.01, a resolution to approve the minutes for March 11th, 2021 monthly board meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? I'll make the second. All right, and before we get into any discussion, just tonight, I'm gonna, I, I want to just reiterate that, you know, we do run our meetings as most public bodies do. According to Robert's rules of order. And please just ask to be recognized. I will certainly recognize. Every board member who wishes to speak on any individual resolution with obviously, you know, time limits imposed. But I tend to be, you know, fairly forgiving and loose when it comes to the time limits, but we do still have to have an orderly meeting. So are there any comments or questions on? Resolution number 04.01 to approve the minutes. Can we have a vote, please?
H Foreman?
Yeah.
A. M. Pastado?
Yes.
A. Lewitt?
Yes.
D. Mellow?
Yes.
E. Seitzman?
Yes.
L. Smith?
Yes.
L. Vega?
Did she say something? I didn't.
Yeah. Commissioner Vega.
She was muted.
I think she said yes. All right. All right, is that, did anybody hear her say yes? Cause I think, I think she said yes.
She's giving thumbs up. She's giving thumbs up.
I think that works during the times of a pandemic. All right, so next item is resolution number 2021 dash 04.02. Resolution authorizing the payment of the monthly list of bills. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion?
All right, I will second it. All right, any questions or? Comment? If I could have a vote, please?
H. Foreman?
Yeah.
A. M. Pastado?
Yes.
A. Lewitt?
Yes.
D. Mellow?
Yes.
E. Seitzman?
Yes.
L. Smith?
Yes.
L. Vega? L. Vega?
Keep doing the thumbs up to Commissioner Vega. I think she, I think I heard an audible yes, though. All right. All right, do we get an audible yes? Ms. Vega, could you just give us a thumbs up?
She might be frozen.
Yep, she just said yes.
Okay, Resolution 2021-04.03, a resolution to approve a new contract for the executive director. I will make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, so any questions or comments?
Yes, I, Dave, I have a, I'm sorry, Chairman, I have a couple of things to say or questions.
Commissioner Pastado, you have the floor.
Thanks. So as most of you know, this is the biggest contract and, and pretty much one of the biggest issues we can vote on for our authority. The executive director has a lot of responsibility, is a, is a large salary, and everything, he, he's our leader of this organization. So it's, you know, we want to make sure that we're taking the right steps and making sure that everything in the contract is suitable, legal, and is all of our responsibilities to make sure of that. Some of the things, and let me just, before I get into some of the issues that I have personally, I want to make sure everyone understands that I, I think that the, I'm not going to talk on the performance of the director. I'm not even going to talk about whether I want to vote on this, yes or no. I just want to specifically talk about the items that are in the contract that are missing from the contract and the process in how we got to this point to extend or not extend his, his contract. One of the first items is, in the executive director's contract, in Section 8 of the contract, it states that the current contract performance evaluation is evaluated by the board once a year, and it's supposed to be 60 days before the end of the employment's year. So I don't think, right off the bat, I, I'm not sure, I did not see that, I might have missed it, but there was no evaluation that I saw, that I gave, that I voted on, and there was something emailed out today on an evaluation, but I, I never saw that. So it is, it is, right off the bat, unclear whether the board has done that evaluation. Now, a committee is not legally responsible for doing any type of evaluation. It has to be the entirety of the board. No single commissioner can do it, the chairman can't do it. It has to be done by the board. And that's, that's directly in Section 8 of the contract. Number two, and this is a big one, there is a personal authority given to the current director to fire and hire at his willing members of the authority, employees, staff, and senior-level managers. That authority by state mandate has to be given by the board. In 99% of all authorities in New Jersey, that mandate, that authority is, is done by the board. Now, it is okay for the director to have that authority, but it has to be a resolution that comes from the board to give him that authority, and that's not the case right now. We never voted on that authority. We've never given him that. It's just been put in his contract, and I would like to see us talk about that and kind of, you know, see if that's the right thing. And if it is, and it might be, then we need to have a resolution to give him that authority. Number three, there's no termination for clause specific in the contract. There, there are statements that say things like, "Has to act professional," "Has to do," you know, good clause for the authority, but I would like to see there be items specifically in there that give some direction, so it's not so vague, that we can all talk about and we can, we can put in. We don't want to avoid a potential challenge of, you know, the contract, there are certain grounds that aren't mentioned, that there could be a vagueness to, where there's gray areas. We don't want to have that so that there's, there's an issue in the, in the long term. The next item, number four, is, as it relates to the vehicle for the executive director, my understanding is that we give the ability for the director to drive the, his personal vehicle issued by the housing authority to and from his residence. That is what is, that's what's stated. Now, now, there's certain directors in the state of New Jersey that have their personal vehicle that they just drive to work, and then they use the housing authority vehicle to drive for meetings. In this case, our director, I believe, drives the issued vehicle to and from work. And the reason why I mention this is, potentially could be a problem, the IRS and HUD mandate and require that any personal use of the vehicle be reported as income on a W-2. So if we're paying for those miles, we're paying for those gas, we potentially could be liable where the HUD is going to come to us and say, you know, "Write us a check for this." Now, the other reason why I mention this is because HUD gives executive directors $172,000 and change as the maximum amount that they could be given in a course of a year for salary all in. And right now, our executive director reaches that threshold on salary alone, and if he is going over with personal use of a vehicle, we could also be liable from HUD that there's a problem. So again, none of these things that I mentioned talk about his performance. I just want to make sure that we're on the same page, that we're, we're doing things with, with the right process in place according to the letter of the law, according to the, the mandate set by HUD, and we all have a responsibility to point these things out and make sure. I also am concerned that, you know, I really would love, as it relates to some of these, you know, things that I talked about here, a different, you know, Harold has an opinion, and he's an attorney that works with us, but there's also another attorney that handles a lot of, and has handled a lot of issues, personnel matters in the state of New Jersey and with our association in a fantastic way, someone that's been doing it for 30 years, has dealt with 15 or 20 different housing associations in New Jersey, usually deals on the personnel side, and that's Mr. Manfredi. So I would love to know if we reached out to him on these matters as it relates to this contract to see if we can get a different opinion, because I'm, like I mentioned, it's a serious matter. It's a, it's a big contract, it's someone that leads the, the top of this organizational tree, and I think that all of us here, I would make a motion to kind of, you know, bypass this vote, go back to the drawing board, maybe take these issues to the personal, personnel committee, address some of these concerns. Maybe all of us can look at the evaluation, we can maybe score the evaluation as a board and then vote on that evaluation. And then when it comes back and we're on the same page, we can make a better judgment of maybe some of these things that are now in the contract, we feel safe about it, we feel secure about it, and it gives everyone a, a second breath of kind of understanding what should and should not be in it, and we can move forward. So we, so again, we don't have any problems, and we might not have any problems, but we just want to make sure that some of these things are issued so we don't have a problem with HUD as it relates to one of our biggest contracts that we give out to personnel.
All right, thank you. Mr. Fitzpatrick, could you provide any light on any of the questions, particularly the first, the first four?
Well, let me speak to what I believe was point number two, which is the question of appointment of members of the staff. There's more to it than just this contract. At the point that the new executive director came in, one of the things that the authority board did was conduct a thorough review of the bylaws, and there have been several times that they were changed, but the review that I'm talking about goes back quite some time. The most recent version of the bylaws, if you want to look for them, is October 11th of 2018, and this provision has been in there since that thorough review. And it provides that the executive director, and that's no matter who it is, would be the appointing authorities that Commissioner Pastado was referring to.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I just interrupt real quick? In Section 4 of the bylaws, it says the board has reserved personnel authority over the executive director, the chief financial officer, and also our, the point is the bylaws say one thing, and the executive director's contract says a different thing. That's my point.
No, I don't agree with that. If you read the next sentence, it says, "The executive director and secretary shall be the appointing authority for all other employees other than the ones that were specifically listed in the sentence you read, including the authority to hire, terminate, train, supervise, and compensate any such permanent, temporary, or other part-time employee of the authority." That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, as it relates, though, to the executive director, the CFO, and all other senior-level employees designated, in the contract, the director has the personnel authority. In the bylaws...
Let me, let me finish. No, the bylaws in the contract are the same as far as I'm concerned. They say the same thing.
No, that, that's, that's a big disagreement. Yeah, I'll let you go. Go ahead.
And the bylaws were thoroughly vetted by the entire board, and they knew exactly at that time what they were doing to incorporate that designation. And I don't believe that there needed to be a separate resolution to make that designation to the executive director. It's made right in our bylaws. There's no more important document. Now, if you want to talk about the contract and that designation, I'd be glad to listen to any argument you have that that's different from the bylaws.
Well, we're, it sounds like we're at a, we're at a, that you're saying one thing, I'm saying the other, so I just, why don't we talk about number one with the performance evaluation done by the board? Can you tell me when the evaluation was done by the board?
I can't give you the dates, but I, I know that the personnel committee did an evaluation.
I'm talking about the, I'm, I'm talking, I'm, I'm sorry, Chairman, for interrupting. I hope I'm allowed to just kind of keep going here. You stop me if I'm being out of line.
You answered your question. If you need to give some clarification.
The board, it, it says directly, and, and I know that the personnel committee might have given the evaluation, but they're, they're, they're not designated in our bylaws or the, the contract, the Section 8 of the contract. It says the performance evaluated by the board as a whole.
No, it doesn't say whole. Doesn't say whole. Says the board.
Sorry, sorry, the board. So where, the board only makes decisions through resolutions, correct?
Well...
We can, we can only put policies in with...
They haven't historically done the evaluation by resolution.
Historically. Yeah, I, yeah, we don't care about it.
Well, my, my recollection so far is that the personnel committee has always done the evaluation.
Well, that's, just because it's past practice doesn't mean it's perfect practice. I mean, according to that, it says the board.
That's a different point. It's always up to the board, it's always up to the board to decide how it wants to proceed going forward. I'm just telling you my recollection of what's happened so far, and I think that's appropriate.
So you, you think it's appropriate for the board to do the evaluation? Everyone?
I'll give an example. We have a procurement process. Members of the procurement committee do evaluations. Those are presented to the board, the board ultimately votes on it.
Exactly.
But the entire board does not do the evaluation.
That's right. We never voted on this evaluation either. That's exactly, you just said the answer, Harold, so, so we... We never voted on this evaluation, so it was never presented to the board, so it was never evaluated by the board.
The only thing that's before you today is the contract. If you want to change the evaluation process, that's a separate issue.
But the contract is based on the good evaluation.
Commissioner Smith.
We're looking to extend the contract, and the reason we're doing that, it says one of these, whereas, performance evaluation.
Commissioner Smith, all right, we need to keep this an orderly meeting. Commissioner Pastado had the floor, and our attorney was answering his question. I do want to point out, though, that the procurement committees fill out evaluation forms on the contract. Those evaluation forms are not voted on by the whole board.
But, but procurements are not part of what it stated in his contract where he has to be evaluated by the board. Dave, so what you just said means nothing. His contract says he has to be evaluated by the board. He was never evaluated by the board. He was violated by a small committee, and we never saw that. We never even saw that evaluation until it was requested today. Until today, wow.
It's actually stated in federal law that we have to, I believe, Harold, am I speaking out of turn? It's in federal law that we have to rate certain procurement bidders.
That's wonderful, but that's not what we're talking about here.
I would say here's another example of when a committee then presents something to the board. That's the only reason why I referred to procurement.
Right, and, and... Chairman Mello's example was to say that we evaluate bidders and companies, but that evaluation is not part of somebody's contract.
All right, again, it's, it's, this is really, Commissioner Pastado has time to have questions.
So, so, so Chairman...
Let me try to answer the other two points, though, if I can, Chair.
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
On the question of clauses, I believe that the contract is sufficient, it makes it clear that the executive director can be removed for costs. As to auto, it's my understanding, you can chime in on this, Mark, do you get a disclosure of the use of the auto on either a 1099 or a W-2?
Don't mute yourself.
Wait, hold on, before you answer that, before you answer that, Chairman, I, I, and I, I look, I don't know, I just want to be safe here, and this was one of the items I wanted to talk about, but in order for the director to be discussing, this is a personnel matter with the director, right? He was not received a rice notice. Now, now, I'm not saying he can't answer that question. I don't know, I'm not an attorney. But I just want to be careful here that anything that we talk about, that the director talks about, he has not been given a rice notice. Now, I don't know why he wouldn't be given a rice notice.
I agree with him.
So I, I just wanted to mention that.
Okay, well, let me, let me answer the rice question. The term "rice" comes from a case that was decided by the appellate division of the Superior Court, the second highest court in the state some time ago. And it technically is an Open Public Meetings Act case. It deals for the circumstance where a board wanted to go into closed session to discuss issues involving an employee and did not notice the employee, and the employee wanted the opportunity for the discussion to be in public. That's not our case here. Indeed, to the contrary, in 2018, the New Jersey Supreme Court, without actually saying that it was overruling Rice, clarified Rice to make it clear that if the board, not the employee, the board, decides that it does not want to go into closed session and does it in open session, there's absolutely no reason to give a rice notice, because the public is being served by discussing it in public. And technically, the Rice case turned on the Open Public Meetings Act. So as to Commissioner Pastado's question about the opportunity to discuss the matter in closed session that was never offered to the employee, and since it wasn't, it's, the case from 2018 involving Kane University is what controls here, and there was no reason to give a, a rice notice. and there was no reason to give a ni, a rice notice. Um, the only reason why I asked Mark was because I don't know the answer. Uh, the intent is that the portion of employee use that's personal gets disclosed, and HUD, as part of setting the salary, has provided that there are certain benefits that can be given that are part of that basic salary that has the limit. And that includes the benefits of all types that are available to other employees, the benefit of vacation, and the benefit of the use of the vehicle. That's not in excess.
So, i- it seems like, uh, Chairman is okay if I go here?
Um, yes, but if, if you could wrap it up, we do want to get to other members, but yes.
Of course, yep. Um, so it sounds like, I, I think we can make this kind of, you know, without a lot of debate back and forth. I, I don't see how, there's two outstanding items, in my opinion. One being the most important is that the evaluation for the director, in my opinion, I, I can't see how another commissioner would disagree that they don't want to be part of that process. And again, I'm not saying he's done, in my opinion, he's done a, you know, very good job. So, I'm saying that every commissioner should be a part of that process. And I think that's the one item that is glaring, that's outstanding right now, and it's in his contract. Every commissioner should have the ability to evaluate, uh, that score sheet that was hand, that was given out today. We should all receive that. I think it's a great process. It's good governance for all of us to be able to score it, uh, communication with the residents, and, and, you know, everything that was on it, and give our scores. And then at the end, we provide an average score, and we vote on it, and it gets passed as our boards, as a whole, an evaluation for the director. So, that, that, that would be my one main reason for, for just, let's take a deep breath. Let's, let's push this off. Let's send out that evaluation, um, and let's all get on the same page. Um, so that would be my one thing.
And, and I'm not, I'm not opposed to making those changes moving forward when we do an evaluation. I believe we did the evaluation in the fall, um, when we do evaluations going forward. Um, but, you know, that's, that's really in the past, at this point, the, the most recent evaluation. And they're, they're not, one's not a trigger of the other. I mean, the reason we are, the personnel committee, um, wanted to consider an extension of the contract is because we're doing really the outlier thing here that we, we've let the contract get to where it has less than 12 months on it, which is very atypical uh, for housing director, executive director contracts throughout the state and throughout the nation. Also, it's also not necessarily typical to only do a three-year extension. So, you know, we, we wanted to do that. This is the last, um, meeting of our board year, and I just, I wanted to do that in the personnel committee. The other personnel committee members wanted to do that as well. So, I am not a-
I'm sorry, Chairman Mo, what was the, what was the reasoning for wanting to do it in such a hurry?
I don't consider it a hurry. I actually think, if anything, we took too long. I think to let, it was disrespectful, in my mind, to let it go to a point of, um, having less than a year on the contract. I mean, it's kind of like, um-
But we never, again, you were never given the opportunity to evaluate this con, to review the evaluation, to look at the contract. We got it yesterday. No, out of the blue, not even aware that we were considering this.
It was on the agenda.
So, now we're asked to vote on this within one day, 24 hours, make the biggest decision we possibly could make as a board within 24 hours, again, with information that I received at around 2:00 this afternoon, as far as the evaluation of things. I, I just don't understand why this process is being so rushed. It is rushed, because it was thrown on the agenda to me out of the blue, because I was not aware that we were even considering something like this.
I, I might be missing something, but I believe it was on the agenda when the agenda was released a week ago.
Not, not the evaluation. I didn't even know we had an evaluation. I didn't see that.
That's because the evaluation, we're not going to release as part of a, a publicly distributed agenda. That, that has to be, that's an item that has to be requested.
But the evaluation was completed in December. Why didn't we get it till yesterday?
Section eight of the contract, section eight of the contract says, "The board," not the personnel committee, not the chairman, "the board has to do, be part of the evaluation process."
I, I understand.
Yeah, this is very clear, uh, Chairman. I mean, to, to rush this right now, especially the way things are looking, the perception that it's the last meeting, like you just said, before potentially new commissioners, is very, very odd and smells weird. There's no reason to rush this. If we've waited this long, we can now take another month easily, provide the, the evaluation to all the commissioners, have a report done, everyone scores it, like I'm saying, and, and, and that's a great process. That's good governance.
And make sure that all the language in the contract is up to par and, and are correct, and also make sure that we review the salary requirements and make sure that we don't pass anything. I don't understand why, and you're not saying it's rushed, but we don't, we have all these unknowns again, and again, we're rushing through a vote.
I appreciate your point, but I think somebody could also say that it's, it's, we were really derelict in our, in our-
Who's somebody? Who would say that? It's derelict to, to make decisions without information. That's derelict.
I will say this, I will say this, uh, Chairman. HUD is, HUD is going to look at this. If we vote on this now, without the commissioners as a whole and the board, and we do not have part of the evaluation process, HUD is go, I'm gonna call, I'll call them tomorrow and let them know that this is the process, because that's my responsibility, just like it was with the, with, and, and-
With the section eight.
Now, why would you, why would you-
Just like it was with the section eight, which now is, we've lost $20,000 already.
I have the floor, all right?
We agreed to go to HUD. We all agreed to go to HUD with that.
I have the floor. You're well within your right to do that. I was a part of this board when we didn't even do evaluations, all right? I was a part of the board when we didn't do anything like this. We instituted the evaluation process into our bylaws. That was us. I believe I'm the only one who's still a member of the board from when we instituted that change to our bylaws.
And that doesn't make anything that's happening right.
That's, that's debatable, and that's your opinion, and I respect that opinion, Commissioner Smith. All right.
And now, I, and, and again, Chairman, I, I wouldn't, like, I, I tried to reach out to you today to talk about this. I tried to reach out to Commissioner Seitzman to talk about this. I didn't get a call back. I didn't get a return call. So, I'm not trying to, like, bamboozle this at the meeting and, like, put it out the blast, but y- y- you have to be able to answer one question to me, to, to make me feel safe about this. Why, why, why wouldn't you want to, why wouldn't you want to wait one month?
Why don't you when you call, so, please?
Why, why can't, why can't you, no, no problem, I understand. Why can't you wait one month? It's a, it's a, there's, there's, we waited this long. We've waited this long.
We waited this long.
In our retreat, Chairman Maske-
Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Chairman, may I speak? Yes, yes, I'd like to speak. At our retreat, we discussed the issues of, of trust and, and how to move forward with the project, and making sure that the project didn't fail, to make sure that there was trust and communication. I don't see how something like this builds that, is a step in that direction, build that trust and communication with the community, that they're not even aware that their executive director is about, you know, getting a new contract. I mean, it's, it's- Was the resident advisory board aware, was, let me ask you this, was the resident advisory board aware that we were considering giving the, the executive director a new contract?
Resident advisory board is aware of our agenda as much as anybody when it was released a week ago.
A week ago? They, they have a week to think about this, to know that we're gonna extend the contract, that, again, to make the biggest decision we make as a board.
That's what many bodies, including our city council, our, our board of whatever-
But that's, but that's communication. That's your idea of, of open communication with the resident advisory board? That's your idea of open communication, that we're gonna move forward in this process and make, make it successful?
I was on this board. When I initially came onto this board, I think it's vastly, vastly better than the prior situation we had eight, nine years ago when I became a member of this board. And if it deserves any further revision or tweaking moving forward, then that is to be done at future meetings. All right, does anybody else have any comments or questions?
Can I just ask Harold one more question?
Yes, please, if you could keep it brief.
Has, has, um, has Mr. Manfredi been asked for his advice as counsel on this personnel matter as it relates to the contract with the executive director?
Not to my knowledge.
All right, and I, I will just add to that, that, that's not what we contracted Mr. Manfredi to do. I have an incredible amount of respect for Mr. Manfredi. He's a legal guidance and counsel, but that is not what he's contracted us to work on. All right.
He's not contracted- I'd like to make a motion to table this resolution.
Second, second that.
So, we'll have a vote on the motion to table, and then if that does not prevail, if that prevails, we will move on to the agenda. If that does not prevail, we will move on to a vote on this item. So, the motion is on the floor, and it has been seconded to table this resolution and to move on to the next resolution on the agenda. Can we have a vote, please?
Yeah, unmute yourself.
I'm so sorry, thank you for that. H Foreman?
No.
A Impastado?
Yes.
A Lewitt?
No.
D Mellow?
No.
E Seitzman?
No.
L Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Vega, I don't know if we heard you. Yes, good, thank you. All right, so the, the vote fails. If we can move on to the vote on the resolution-
I have, I have one more comment before we vote.
Oh, man.
I have one more, one more comment.
I've given you the bulk of the time. If you could make it exceptionally brief.
I'll make it under a minute. Yeah, I'll make it under a minute. The last time we had a, a discussion like this with the conflict of interest, we wound up going to HUD and asking them what, what their opinion was. And then we came back to a group, and we all collectively voted to send it to HUD, to send it to HUD to let them get in the, the answer on what is right or wrong, if, if it's a conflict or not. This is, we're now repeating the same exact issue with this. We're gonna be doing the same exact thing. Well, I don't understand how, this is what, it's gonna be the same thing. It's gonna go to HUD. They're gonna come back and go, "Yeah, you're right. The evaluation was not done by the board, and we're gonna have to go back and do it again." We're not learning from our mistakes. We're not moving forward. You're trying to pass this right before the, the, the new commissioners come on board, and i- it's absolutely ridiculous, Dave, Chairman Mellow. Uh, we see right through it. We see everything right through it, and it's, and it's completely unprofessional, what you're trying to do here.
And I'm just gonna say, keep in mind that one day these meetings will be held in person again, and you will have to face the residents that you're voting against and that you're undermining. So, again, you may be voting from the comfort of your own homes today, but again, these meetings will take place in person again, and you will face these residents who you are undermining.
And for the commissioners that don't say anything, you're, you're completely irresponsible for not even giving us your opinion. Where's your opinion?
All right, if we could call the vote, please. I am calling the vote. Director.
H Foreman? A Impastado? A Lewitt?
Yes.
D Mellow?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
L Smith?
No.
Did she say anything? I, I didn't get it.
Nothing that I heard. Commissioner Vega, could you repeat your vote, please? All right, I saw you blink, Commissioner Vega, so I think your connection's back good again.
No.
No, okay. So, the vote prevails. All right, next item on the agenda. Resolution number 2021-04.04, resolution to award a contract for dwelling unit improvements. I'll make the motion. Is there a second? All right, I think, uh, I believe Seitzman was first to second it. Do I have any comments or questions? We can have a vote, please.
H Foreman?
Yeah.
A Impastado?
Yes.
A Lewitt?
Yes.
D Mellow?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
L Smith?
Yes.
I believe that was a yes, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That was perfect that time. All right. Uh, resolution 2021-04.05, a resolution to award a contract for security enhancements. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, Mr. Foreman, second it. Any questions or comment? We can have a vote, please.
H Foreman?
Yeah.
A Impastado?
Yes.
A Lewitt?
Yes.
D Mellow?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
L Smith?
Yes.
Resolution prevails. Resolution 2021-04.06, a resolution to increase the amount of the contract for extraordinary capital improvements. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Foreman, second. So, any questions or comment? Give the vote, please.
H Foreman?
Yeah.
A Impastado?
Yes.
A Lewitt?
Yes.
D Mellow?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
L Smith?
Yes.
L Vega?
Yeah. Yes.
All right, resolution prevails. Thank you. That was perfect that time. Uh, 20, resolution 2021-04.07, a resolution to increase the amount of the contract for fee accountant services. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Foreman, second it. Do I have any comments or questions? We can have the vote, please.
H Foreman?
Yeah.
A Impastado?
No.
A Lewitt?
Yes.
D Mellow?
Yes.
E Seitzman?
Yes.
L Smith?
Yes.
L Vega?
Yeah.
All right, the resolution prevails. Resolution number 2021-04.08, a resolution to award a contract for recreational facility oper- I'll have a second.
Uh, just one point, uh, Mr. Chair, the resolu, I'm sorry, the agenda was updated. That is actually, uh, a resolution to reject a bid for recreational facility operations.
Okay. All right, so, resolution to reject an award for contract for recreational facility operations. Did I say that correctly?
Yes.
All right, so I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any comments or questions?
Yeah, can, is this, um, I think it, I think we held off in, uh, the executive director's notes to, uh, talk about this one. Uh, is that right?
Yes.
So, this is, this is, this is rejecting, um, is this essentially rejecting Zog Sports?
Correct.
So, we, we collectively, uh, thought it was a, was a priority to activate the space for our recreational activities for our youth. We've been working on this for, you know, since I, I remember since I, when I took, um, Commissioner's seat to try to get the field to be activated by our residents and our youth, uh, especially our teens, keep them off the streets, keep them engaged in something positive. So, it came to where we didn't really have too much time on the space. The city, uh, gets 50, uh, priorities to select when they want to use it, and they were using it in the spring here, uh, starting soon from, uh, you know, 4:00 to 7:30 each night, uh, Monday through Friday. So, we weren't able to, um, you know, we didn't have a lot of options. So, we decided to take the, the limited amount of time that we had and try to find programs that suit that priority that I just talked about.
And one of those is hopefully to get, um, a flag football league for our youth and teenagers going. Um, and then also we were gonna create an open night, an open field night where, um, Community Lifestyles is going to be the one responsible for running in and keeping it, you know, active and making sure no one's doing anything inappropriate, um, for our youth, just our youth to activate the space and do whatever they want to see fit. They want to play tag, kickball, um, and do that. And then Friday night, there's gonna be a, a youth kickball league going on. So I think this is something, uh, something fantastic. Obviously, ZOG is, has been, you know, someone that rents the field, gives us added funds. Uh, and, and of course, you know, we're, we're an authority that needs as much money as possible, but I think collectively we, we came as a group and discussed this and, um, and the end result was agreed that we prioritize our youth and keeping them engaged, especially our teens, more than the, the $14,000 that we were gonna get or whatever it was. So that's kind of, I, I hope I summed it up. If I didn't, uh, someone please add whatever I missed.
Just concerned about the, you know, the, the process, just pulling the rug out from somebody. I know in the RFP, why, why was there not the foresight to understand that we would need the fields for our, for our kids? I mean, why do we have to pull this RFP? Why does, you know, why was that even considered this year? I mean, it's been an ongoing thing. I know, I know all the residents come to me and complain that, you know, there's adults playing kickball on the field where their kids can't never get an opportunity to play. So I'm just, I don't understand why we took the RFP this year again to begin with.
Sure. I think I, I can address that. I, I think the, the, the problem with having open field was finding a nonprofit that would come in and actually utilize the field under a nonprofit's auspices. I think if there were to have been no nonprofits that came in, um, and, uh, offered to use their expertise in running flag football, if there wouldn't have been that push to do that, then we probably would have turned back at least on some of these nights to ZOG Sports and offered them the use of the field. The difference here was in the next resolution that you're, that's gonna come before you. One of the nonprofits did come in and give a, a good proposal to use the field in the evenings. So because we had a nonprofit that would come in, that we've had a track record with, then the decision was then made that we would have to turn over to ZOG and say, um, our, our preference was for them to use the field. We couldn't have foreseen that, um, before the nonprofit proposals were put in.
Yeah. And just, just to add to that, um, ideally in a perfect world, uh, our youth would be activating the field from like, let's say, four to seven, 30, like in the past. And then, and then ZOG's adult programming, like ZOG or there was another company that wanted to do it, comes in and, and they do it at the nighttime. And some of the feedback that we received for some of the residents is like, hey, why are these, you know, why are these people that don't even live in Hoboken or, or especially don't live in the housing authority, why are they on our field all the time? They're making noise. You know, why aren't our youth on the field? Why aren't they, you know, participating in things? So I, I think it was also kind of like, uh, you know, this is our turf and, and we, we want to see more of our residents get to activate and use it as much as possible.
All right. Are there any other comments or questions? All right. If we can have the vote, please.
H. Foreman?
Yeah.
A. M. Pistado?
Yes.
A. Lewitt?
I'm a little confused. Um, but I'll, I'll put in a tentative yes.
D. Mello?
Should, should we explain, should we explain it better so that?
A little bit.
Well, what's, what's the, like, I, I think it would feel better if everyone understood what was going on. Is there a specific question?
Um, well, who's getting on and who's, who's off the field?
ZOG Sports is, is getting off and, and Community, Community Lifestyles is getting off.
Okay.
Well, let, let me, let me speak to this question of why there are two separate RFPs. That's a crucial thing to understand. What Mr. Reco described is that to some extent, they interact. The more we get proposals, and we got more this time than we did many other times, from not-for-profits to run an event, the less we can have a profit-making enterprise run an event. We don't have enough time for both. Historically, we did not eat up all of the time with the not-for-profits. Now, the question, which may relate to Commissioner Smith's question, is why did we have two separate RFPs? We had two. There is a concept called a concession under New Jersey law. In the case of the not-for-profits, we actually obtain money from them if we want them to be a participant. And as a result, the procurement process is different. It requires a concession. You have seen them recently in the past before on other things, and it includes the executive director preparing a report on why it's a good thing for the authority. In this case, the executive director has decided to reject the proposal for a concession from the profit-making enterprise because he regards the proposals that were received under the RFP for not-for-profits to be better for the authority and its residents. Now, Commissioner Lewitt, you can't say tentatively. You have to vote one way or another. I hope what I just said explains, explains what we're doing here. We're rejecting the for-profit one. And we will then consider whether or not you award on the not-for-profit ones.
Yes.
Just a quick question. How, are we rejecting one that we've already approved?
No, not at all. We, we haven't gotten there yet. Um, the vote is still up. It's, it stopped at the point that Commissioner Lewitt voted.
I say yes.
D. Mello?
Yes.
E. Seitzman?
Yes.
L. Smith?
Yes.
L. Vega?
Yes. Yes.
Resolution prevails. Resolution number 2021 dash 04.09, a resolution to award a contract for resident, for contracts for resident services program providers. I'll make the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments or questions on this? Since we're amongst the approvals, if you vote affirmatively, will be the, the new alternate, um, facilitator of services for our kids in the form of black football program that hasn't existed. Okay. If we can have a vote, please. Are there any questions? I'm sorry to miss somebody there.
I just want to say this is a great batch of proposals. We appreciate the nonprofits very, very much. This is gonna be an exciting year on the field.
I want to thank Commissioner Pistado for pushing us to really tighten up our, our processes when it came to proposals and things like that so that we, we were more clearly communicating to our service providers what the expectations were, what they could or could not use and, and, and things along those lines. So thank you, Commissioner, for that. All right. If we could have a vote, please.
H. Foreman?
Yeah.
A. M. Pistado?
Yes.
A. Lewitt?
Yes.
D. Mello?
Yes.
E. Seitzman?
Yes.
L. Smith?
Yes.
L. Vega?
Yeah.
All right. There's no new business for tonight. There's no call for a closed session.
Actually, I had new business. I, I, I believe I emailed you about that new business earlier today. I, I would like to introduce a resolution to, uh, perform a national search for a new executive director to ensure that when we do, if, if we do extend this contract, because I'm gonna be calling HUD, we're gonna be following through up on that. But, um, if we do, we should make sure that the, the person we give this job is the best person for the job. And if that is Mark, if, if that's Director Reco, so be it. That's great. But I think we should definitely take the time, especially moving forward with the processes that we're taking, undertaking and redeveloping our projects and redeveloping our housing authority, we definitely want to make sure that we have the right person for the job. So again, I introduce a resolution to perform a national search.
Mr. Fitzpatrick, can we even vote on a resolution that's introduced without the, uh, the public notice that's required with the Open Public Meeting Act and the posting of the agenda and the communicating of the agenda?
Yes. A resolution is always on order. There's nothing in the law that requires that any of the other issues you've just touched on be addressed in advance.
Okay. So do I have a, do we have a second on Commissioner Smith's?
I second it.
If we could have a vote, please.
H. Foreman?
No.
A. M. Pistado?
Yes.
A. Lewitt?
No.
D. Mello?
No.
E. Seitzman?
No.
L. Smith?
So, so before I vote, I just want to make it clear that all the people that are voting no don't want to make sure that we have the best person possible to, to redevelop our housing authority. That, that's what you're saying. That you, you don't want to take the time to ensure that we have the best person available to proceed with this endeavor. I vote, vote, yes.
Thank you.
L. Vega?
Did we hear her vote? Commissioner Vega?
Yes.
Yeah. All right. The resolution fails. All right. Motion, I make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Goodbye, everyone.
Aye.
All right.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Night, everyone.